Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Start with the roll call.
Good evening, Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Commissioner Freitas.
Commissioner Benson.
Present.
And Chairwoman Meyer.
Here.
Thank you.
We will do a salute to the flag. We'll move to approval of minutes for the February 14th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 14th meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We could probably all in favor there?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move to oral communications. This would be the time if you would like to discuss anything not on the agenda tonight, that would be your time now.
I do have something to say in this place. I had some communication with Planning Director Kenyon around the GHD scope of work for the next phase of the Beta Zoo Trail. And I had a look at that scope of work, you know, relative to some areas that I felt were underexplored during the IS MND process. And, you know, just took a look at that scope of work, which we had already approved and council had approved, just to sort of double check that the, that there was, those items that we were concerned about as a commission and I was personally concerned about were covered in the scope of work. And many of those items are covered in the scope of work and the scope of work is not yet complete. There's a lot more money that could be added to their scope in order to meet those things. So I did send a letter out to Miles Slattery and the Director of Community Services, to Brian and to Jesse Willer and a couple council folks, just to say where those things, those items that we found lacking in the scope could be upgraded. And so I've done all I can on behalf of the commission, you know, that the next investigations into the conditions for the Beta Zoo Trail are based on the actual alignment of the trail and some of the concerns that were, that I had earlier and that this, that this commission felt was, that had perhaps put the city at some level of risk. So I feel good, the answer to this is that I feel good that we're headed in the right direction, that that next level investigation is going to hit all those items that, that were not adequately, adequately explored earlier. So that's, that's my communication.
Thank you, Commissioner. It doesn't appear that there's anyone on Zoom. Yeah, if you are on Zoom and would like to speak on something not on the agenda, raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands. Thanks. Okay, we will close oral communications. And since there are no continued public hearings, we will move on to new business. And the general plan conformance review for Eureka City Schools' property exchange. As discussed earlier, I'll have to recuse myself. Commissioner Benson will chair. All right, we have a presentation by Assistant Planner.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Penelope Ponse. Let me find. This is it, right?
Yes.
Okay, let me share my screen. Share screen. Okay, and then I'm supposed to do this. All right.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Assistant Planner Ponse and I'm here to present the general plan conformance review of Eureka City Schools' acquisition of property at 3553 I Street and disposal of property at 674 Allard Avenue, also known as the former Jacobs Junior High School campus. Okay. The property for acquisition is at 3553 I Street, which contains two residences on site. The property for disposal, the Jacobs Campus, is at 674 Allard Avenue. Zooming in closer, the I Street property is located east of H Street and south of Manzanita Avenue. And the Jacobs site on Allard Avenue is located between Utah and Spring Streets, south of Alice Burney Elementary School, and south of South Avenue. 3553 I Street is a 6,534 square foot parcel, which is approximately .15 acres. It has a low-density residential land use designation and a residential low zoning. It contains one single-family residence, one 950 square foot ADU, and has a 480 square foot garage. The Jacobs site is 14.1 acres with a public quasi-public land use designation and public facilities zoning. The Jacobs Junior High was built in 1956 and served as the junior high until the 1980s. The campus was used as adult education and a continuation school until the district decided to close the campus in 2009. In 2019, the District's Board of Education declared the site as surplus. And in 2021, the district had all buildings on the site demolished. In December 2023, the school board made a decision to enter into an exchange agreement with AMG Communities Jacobs LLC. Per exchange agreement, the southern 8.3 acres are being sold to the developer and the northern 5.8 acres are being retained by the district and will be continued, and will continue being used as ball fields. Currently, the two, the property contains two parcels. One is 11.7 acres and the other is 2.39 acres. A lot line adjustment will be required to move the shared lot line north to reflect the agreement standards. Any proposed private residential or commercial development would require zoning and general plan map amendments. The district proposes to acquire the .15 acre property at 3553 I Street. The district has not yet developed specific plans. The current intent is to use the existing structures for employee housing, though that might be revisited in the future. The units on site would be leased and no decisions have been made yet about the rates. The district also proposes to dispose 8.3 acres of Jacobs Campus and use the funds from the disposal to help meet district capital facility needs. Since the project is located within city limits, California Government Code 65402 requires the district, prior to either acquisition or disposal of real property, to request a determination from the city's Eureka Planning Commission as, to the conformity of the location, purpose, and extent of the acquisition and disposition with the city's adopted general plan. Staff's recommendation is receive a report and adopt a resolution finding Eureka City Schools' acquisition of 3553 I Street and disposal of 674 Allard Avenue in conformance with the city's 2040 general plan. Here is the suggested motion from the staff report. And here is our new motion. Staff has decided to change the motion to clearly reflect the district's intended purposes for the acquisition and disposition. I'm going to stop screen sharing now to allow for discussion. Staff's available for questions and I believe I saw representatives from the district are here as well on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Assistant Planner Ponse, for the good report, staff report on that and for your hard work to create that. I'd like to open up first to, to the commission to ask questions of staff and/or the petitioners. Go ahead.
Thanks. You note in the staff report and in your presentation that there's two parcels that will be adjusted through lot line adjustment?
Yes.
Are we, I know it might be early, but are we confident that they're both separate legal parcels for purposes of the Subdivision Map Act?
I believe they are. Have you, have we checked, Kristin?
They're still working on getting the necessary title report for that lot line adjustment.
But that would be an administrative, ministerial, essential action should it, should it come back in the future?
Correct.
I noticed in the packet that there was a notice of exemption filed by the school district in the 35-day window. Did we provide any comments on the notice of exemption or have any concerns? Because as a responsible agency, we have the ability to comment.
I hadn't realized it had been posted to the county recorder's office until we got the application for the general plan conformance review.
And do we usually hear from the school district when they take action on Sequoia projects, from your experience?
No.
Yeah. I noticed that, I could have told you because I was filing a notice of exemption and I saw it on the clipboard there, but I didn't think of it. On, my last question is-
I think in the future, though, isn't there a new state law that more stuff needs to get posted to Sequinet?
Correct.
So maybe we will catch this stuff in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's becoming not optional. The, the land use and zoning of the property are currently, so it's PQP is the planned designation. Can you clarify that, what that means?
That means that land can be used, the allowed uses for that are government facilities such as schools. It could also be city facilities such as like a corp yard and other things like that and parks.
It stands for public quasi-public.
It's kind of like that, yeah, okay. And PF is public facilities, that's the zoning. So what I struggled with in terms of determining this to be conforming with the general plan, there's two parts to it. There's the site they're acquiring and there's the site they're disposing of. And the site they're acquiring, to me, is a real lateral, you know, it's an existing residential site, they're not planning to disrupt that use, that's easy to wrap my head around. In its current capacity, a PF or PQP property really is best suited to a public or quasi-public user or owner, and that's not the scenario before us. So how do we make the finding that it complies with the general plan or conforms with the general plan in that regard, given the potential new owner?
I found that, sorry, Penelope.
Go for it.
I found this state law that speaks to that, that basically says the local government has to allow a rezone of an, you know, a surplus school property to at least the zoning that surrounds it. So you can't, you know, force them, force a rezone of natural resources for a school property. This site is, is surrounded by a single-family residential, so per state law, it kind of anticipates that when a school is surplus and no longer needed, that it would get zoned to the surrounding, at least as intense a zoning as the surrounding parcels.
Right, so.
Need to be part of the motion that we name the rezoning, or is that automatic?
No, it doesn't happen automatically. They have, there, there needs to be a rezoning process.
Right. But in this case, this would be a low-density land use designation, given this neighboring properties.
We would have to approve at least a low-density residential.
After that, it's, it's an open question. We're not obligated to go beyond that, under the law you're talking about?
Correct. I'm going to find this law for you.
Well, that's helpful, thank you, Director Kenyon. I, because I, while I, I don't have a huge amount of concern about the disposition of the property, I did struggle to see how we could consider, given the nature, if it was residentially zoned property that was held by a public agency that was transferring hands, I could see that being an easy.
So it says, it's 65852.9, and it says, "The legislature recognizes that unused school sites represent a potentially major source of revenue for school districts." And that current law reserves a percentage of unused school sites for park and rec purposes. It is therefore the intent of the legislature to ensure that unused school sites not leased or purchased for park or rec purposes can be developed to the same extent as is permitted on adjacent property.
Okay. And I guess I'll just ask, this is my last question, I think. I noticed that the property that's being acquired under this action by the district, the residential property, is owned by a private party, but I don't know that they're the same party as the group that is subject to the contract. So is this sort of a three-party situation? Do we know?
At this time, we do not know. We found who the property owner of I Street is through Parcel Quest, which is a public site that shows those records, and it said Charles Tripoli, I believe.
Tripoli, yeah, that's what I noticed.
Yeah, the, we asked the school district this and they responded that it was pending still. The LLC is in escrow, I think probably for that parcel.
That's kind of what I thought. Okay, I think that's enough for now. That's, those are my questions.
I want to make sure I understand the answer to Commissioner Lazar's question, that the lot line that would be required at the former Jacobs site would come to city planning and would be ministerial, so that would be a director decision?
It is a director decision, but that gets mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the lot line adjustment, and they can request a hearing by the planning commission. So it could likely, it'll likely come to you.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that.
My question, Director Kenyon or Assistant Planner Ponse, is if the, if the property is, if the property used around this is low-density residential, will we have another opportunity to view what the proposed development in there is to make sure that it's consistent with low density? Or is that expected to be sort of mixed density or medium density? Does it allow, without coming back to us, does it allow them to do higher-density development than the low-density?
It's currently, you know, it's going to be, after the lot line adjustment, it's going to be one parcel zoned for public facilities. So it's going to have to get a general plan and zoning map amendment. And then it'll also, you know, likely be subdivided through a major subdivision. Both those things require review by planning commission. The only exception for that is if it gets rezoned by initiative, then it wouldn't come to you.
Right. Thank you, that-
And it is implicated in an initiative on the ballot this November for rezoning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry. I understand the zoning piece of that. Would the subdivision come through city planning processes?
Yeah, so even though, you know, if, if the initiative passes, it would get rezoned and Sequa wouldn't be triggered, it's very likely that they're not going to, it won't be like one development on, it's very likely they'll want to subdivide. And that will have to come through the city and will trigger Sequa.
Okay. Any other questions, initial questions from the planning commission? Okay, let's move it to-
Just on what we just heard, given that if the initiative were to pass, the land use potential outside of subdivision would still have the same density and potential impacts that are no, no longer subject to discretion because they're not requiring legislative action with us. Wouldn't that make a subdivision kind of an easier Sequoia road because the development could occur regardless of whether new lines were created?
Right. If the initiative passes, we have no discretion on what uses would be allowed there. So the secret document wouldn't be analyzing what uses would be allowed there. It would be more analyzing-
The parcel line impacts.
Yeah, on circulation and things like that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's move into public testimony. And we'd like to hear from any public who would like to speak on this or applicants. And we'll start here in the House, in the chambers, and then we'll move to online. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this project? Appears that there are none. Let's move to folks online. Anybody like to, to comment to the commission on this? I don't see any hands.
Zach, can they unmute themselves? I just want to make sure, because we do have two representatives here, if they want to.
Yeah, go ahead and raise your hand if you want to speak on this. You should have that ability on Zoom to put a hand up.
Paul, would you like to speak?
Yeah. Hi, just first of all, I wanted to let you know that yes, I am here and listening to the conversation. Really nothing to add in terms of what the staff report has been. I did want to say I thought it was a very thorough and well-put-together staff report, so thank you for that. And just listening again to the conversation amongst the planning commission and council. So we're here to answer any questions and also have our legal counsel, Ari Percival, if other questions are here, we would like to direct our way.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, appreciate it. Did you see any other comments or hands up? Okay, I'd like to ask Assistant Planner Ponse to please bring the motion back up. Oh, sorry, and this, this closes public comment. Thank you, Jessica. And so we're looking at the news.
Yeah, staff is recommending the bottom motion.
Understood. I'd like to hear, hear the motion if any of the commissioners would like to move it.
I'll make the motion for purposes of discussion. I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding Eureka City Schools' acquisition of 3553 I Street for the purposes of employee housing and disposal of 674 Allard Avenue to meet district capital facility needs in conformance with the city's 2040 general plan.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second, so we'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion.
Yeah, I guess I would just express for the folks listening at home, the importance of the forthcoming initiative that'll be on the ballot and just the consequences of that, I think, are pretty clear, that should, should this exchange occur, there won't be very much opportunity for discretion by our body. And that may or may not be a good thing, but it is something to weigh heavily when voting on that in, in November. So I think that is important to emphasize when we, this might be the last time we see it, frankly, so. I just feel like that's worth noting, given what lies ahead.
Okay. I would echo Commissioner Lazar's thoughts on this. You know, our role here is pretty narrow. I think it's clear enough to me that this does fit within the general plan. I, as somebody who lives here, don't appreciate the process by which we got here, and I think it's important for the citizens and especially the people in that neighborhood to think about what they want to see and how they want to see things develop and to communicate that as the city citizens are going to vote. But I'm happy voting on this now to move it forward.
Okay, thank you. I see, you know, looking at the, the attachments two through six and looking at, this is what Eureka City Schools wants to do with this property, I don't see any reason for us to stand in the way of that. And, you know, I also don't see the reason to politicize it through adding it to, to a ballot. This is something that's likely to move forward through the normal planning processes. But nonetheless, that's just a matter of personal opinion. I am in favor of moving this forward. I don't see any really roadblocks to, to this property exchange that's, that's proposed by Eureka City Schools. Any other comments before we take a vote? We have a motion and a second, let's put this to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none? Exemptions, Meredith, of course, recused herself, so this motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sure, I'd like to invite Meredith Mayer, the chair, back to run the meeting, the rest of the meeting.
Okay, so we have made a edit to the agenda. We are going to move the general plan conformance review for county acquisition of 803 Fourth Street. Am I correct, right? We're going to move that last, so we can move to H3, which is the 2040 general plan annual progress report.
Great, thank you. All right, Caitlin Castellana, Senior Planner, I was trying to make this brief, but I do have some information to share about this. So California Government Code Section 65400 requires cities and counties to submit an annual progress report called an APR on the general plan and its implementation to the city council and the state by April 1st of each year. The general plan APR included in your agenda packet highlights key accomplishments in implementing the city's 2040 general plan during the calendar year 2023. The accomplishments in that document are organized under their respective general plan goals, and a snippet on this slide is what it looks like in the report. So this year's APR may not be a complete list, as it was prepared in a short notice, but it's a great start, and we envision this report being more comprehensive next year. So you might ask, what is a general plan? A general plan can be described as the local government's blueprint or constitution for meeting the community's long-term vision for the future through land use, development, and resource decisions. It is required by Government Code Section 65300 and has a long-term planning horizon of 20 to 25 years. There are many types of approvals and actions that must be consistent with the general plan, such as use permits, subdivisions, building permits, and even Sequa review. So as you can see by this land use planning hierarchy pyramid I pulled off the internet, the general plan is at the top with a long-term and more general planning document. Then the zoning code is underneath, which is the city's primary instrument created through legislative actions to implement the general plan. The zoning code includes detailed regulations for land uses, structures, and activities in Eureka, which are often implemented or allowed through subdivisions, next on the pyramid, use permits and variances, et cetera, which are discretionary slash quasi adjudicatory, sorry. I practiced that all day and I still got it wrong. Actions by a quasi judicial body, which is you as the commissioner, as the planning commission. Then at the bottom, there are ministerial building permits, oops, and other administrative permits, like a signed permit and even business licenses that have to follow more detailed regulations and standards, where staff can act on them as no discretion is involved in the decision, meaning staff is not using personal judgment to make the decision because specific standards have been met. So it's important to note that the zoning regulations resulted from the city's general police power to protect public health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And as I previously shared, the zoning regulations must be consistent with the general plan. So although the city's police power is broad, it is not absolute and cannot conflict with the state's general laws. So all general plans in California must include seven mandatory elements, that's land use, housing, sorry, open space, conservation, safety, circulation, and noise, but can include additional optional elements that speak to other topics of local interest. So the 2040 general plans required in optional elements are presented in five sections, which provide the goals and policies to guide the city's short-term and long-term decision-making. So that includes Section 3.1, Our Community, relating to land use, housing, which is under a separate cover, we call the 2019 through 2027 Housing Element, and Kristin will present on, an update on its implementation shortly, as well as the economy, historic and culture preservation. Then we have Section 3.2, Our Environment, relating to natural resources and open space, agriculture and timberlands, and air quality and climate change. Section 3.3- Section three point three, our civic resources relating to arts and culture, parks and recreation and community services. Section three point four, our infrastructure relating to mobility and utilities. And last, Section three point five, our well-being related to health and safety and noise. So next I'll share a timeline of the development and approval of the twenty forty general plan to wrap up this presentation. In two thousand thirteen, the city began the general plan update process. Then for the next five years, outreach and deliberation occurred. And then in October two thousand eighteen, the twenty forty general plan was adopted. And then six months later, the city began the housing element update. And in December two thousand nineteen, the two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-seven housing element was adopted. Although the housing element is a component of the general plan, they are on different cycles, where housing element is updated every eight years and the general plans are every twenty to twenty-five years. Again, Kristen will be presenting on the housing element progress report next after this item. So we recommend you receive the twenty forty general plan APR. And the report is scheduled to be presented to the city council on March nineteenth. And once they accept the report, it will then be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD, and Office of Planning and Research, OPR, by the April first deadline. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Castellana. That's great. Appreciate that. Okay, questions for staff?
Question. So this is open to Caitlin or Kristen. What do we think are on the horizon as far as implementation measures from our general plan that are forthcoming in the near term? What are the most prominent maybe?
So.
The bike plan?
Yeah, the bike plan, the waterfront Eureka plan. A lot of the, there was a lot of housing program, implementation programs, certain of the goals. I foresee this report next year, including more of those implementation measures and what projects, what and goals they go under. As you, if you recall from the last couple of years, our annual progress report was literally just the implementation measures. And it was pretty sparse and it didn't really show all of the good things that the city of Eureka is doing. So since there was no technical template for this report, we chose to focus on the goals and put all the projects underneath it. But a lot of the implementation measures were super broad. Yeah. I don't know if that, sorry if that answers your question.
No, I mean, yeah, that's, I just was interested because staff kind of prioritizes. And we see what lands as part of the legislative follow-up. But but we would, it would be hard to know where they land on rankings because there's often a long laundry list after the general plan gets adopted of implementation. So, thanks.
Report with with great interest. Thank you for doing such a thorough job on it. And it's it's kind of exciting to be part of the city and to see it. I mean, this isn't even everything that's been done. It's it's kind of a, you know, a portion of the things that have been done. And it makes me very proud as a citizen of Eureka to see everything that's that is occurring. And, you know, through all the departments. And I just want to say congratulations on all that has been accomplished. It's quite extraordinary in a short amount of time, you know, since the last report. My one comment is on agriculture and timberlands part of the report. There's not, it just sort of says none, you know, none there. And there's, you know, there's activities that are happening in agriculture and timberlands that are sort of off the radar of the city to some degree because they don't necessarily come through the Farm Bureau. There's agricultural activities that occur within the city that are not necessarily considered farming, you know, and because they're happening on residential parcels. And there are timber activities that are occurring. My family is a good example of that, three and a half acres of timber management. My neighbor, six acres that are in the Greenways and Gulchas that are considered residential. They're not zoned otherwise. So they, but because there aren't formal THPs, timber harvest plans related to that, they don't show up in Cal Fire. So there's a lot of activities that happen in those two sectors in Eureka that are that are just simply not large enough to to be noticed. And sometimes they're not noticed in Sequa. For example, on the Beta Zoo Trail, I S initial study mitigated negative declaration. It just said there's no, none of those activities when it's it's not quite true. So I don't know how to, I don't really know how to advise you to capture those things because it would take a lot of interviewing of people who do those kinds of activities. And it doesn't come out as a as projects necessarily.
Exactly.
But I don't know how to how to how to capture that. And if it ever, and if it really needs to be captured. But I'm just making a comment that those things do exist as opposed to none.
You made me realize we probably should have put the farmer's market under there too. Yeah.
Anyway, it's just it's just a comment more than any kind of directive.
Yeah, I definitely, you know, that is hard if you're not getting a permit through the city of Eureka or the city is not allocating any funds towards anything, then yeah, it's probably not going to be on here. But like, for example, the CDP that got appealed to you guys for the lot line adjustment, there was a conservation deed restriction that would have gone on here, but it's on appeal at the Coastal Commission, you know, showing that some farmland was being preserved for farming uses. And then, yeah, that's really the only farming area besides, I guess, maybe there are some small, very, very small private properties. I mean, maybe Blue Ox, maybe some horses up there, but the city doesn't have very much farmland. But maybe if you, yeah, in the future, you could, if you're doing some good things with your land, maybe let us know and we can see how to recognize it.
Yeah, I'll just give an example on my on my family's land in the Greenways and Gulchas. We have an agreement with the Yurok tribe where they do wild crafting on those lands for traditional crops. You know, fungi and certain kinds of berries and stuff. And so we allow them to come in and manage that land for for basket making materials and other crops that would never hit anybody's radar as agriculture, but it's traditionally ecological knowledge and it's and it's an agricultural activity.
Yeah.
On a larger scale than just someone's garden.
Right, right. Yeah, well, hopefully the Greenways and Gulchas will be on here next year when it's adopted. We can add that. And maybe that'll, that'll obviously be maybe an allowed use in it.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say I appreciate all the work. Nicely done.
Yeah, I will third that sentiment. I appreciate that as well.
I'll fourth it. And then it looks like we don't have any more questions, so I'll open up for a public comment. Do we have to do anything? Do I have to accept it or no? Okay. Unactionable items. Great, okay. Then we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on to the housing element annual progress report. That's me. Okay. So state housing law requires every city and county in California to plan for a share of the state's total projected housing need in their housing elements of their general plans. This happens at an eight-year cycle. Like Caitlin said, the current sixth housing element cycle for Humboldt County runs through twenty twenty-seven. It's the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, who determines how much housing at various affordability levels is needed for each region. Each region's share is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. For the current housing element cycle, HCD allocated to Humboldt County as a region three hundred and three thousand three hundred and ninety dwelling units. That's a goal of constructing three thousand three hundred and ninety net new housing units by twenty twenty-eight. And HCD not only allocates a total number, but they also divide that number into four income categories to ensure housing for all economic segments of the community. Very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. Then, once we get the region-wide RENA, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG, is in charge of allocating that RENA amongst all Humboldt County cities and unincorporated county. So the HCOG has allocated a total of nine hundred and fifty-two units to the city of Eureka, which is twenty-eight percent of the countywide RENA. And if I remember correctly, that's looking at our percentage of the population and our percentage of the workforce. And I think it was based on those two things equally. So like the countywide RENA, the city's RENA suballocation is divided into four income categories. And how do we determine, you know, what fits into which income category? Basically, what affordable means is spending less than thirty percent of your monthly income on housing, which for a renter would include your rent and utilities, and for a homeowner would include your mortgage, property taxes, and utilities. The income categories are based on median income. So for instance, very low income is thirty-one to fifty percent of area median income. Extremely low is zero to thirty percent. And Humboldt County's actual median income is fifty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. But the state, for purposes of determining affordable housing prices, sets our median income for twenty, for this this year, or twenty twenty-three, is eighty-three thousand eight hundred for a family of four. So based on that state-assigned median, up to somebody, a four-person household earning up to forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year qualifies as very low. At that annual income, affordable, rent plus utilities would be one thousand thirty-one dollars a month. That's thirty percent. And then low, the threshold for low is sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty for a family of four, which affordable rent for that threshold is one thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars a month, which to me does not sound very affordable. So that's, I like to point that out because it's surprising. So where was I? State law requires the city to provide adequate land with adequate density and appropriate development standards to accommodate the RENA, and we must report on our progress towards meeting our RENA each year. The city tracks and reports to HCD on new housing units in four different ways in our annual report. We report first on the total number of complete applications that are submitted for new housing units that year. That's Table A. And then, second, we report on the total number of building permits approved each year for new housing units. A building permit is approved when plans have been submitted or reviewed for conformance with building fire and zoning codes and public works requirements, and it's ready to go, but the permit has not been issued. Issuance of building permits is a third thing we track. And when a building permit is issued, it means fees have been paid and construction can begin. And lastly, we track and report when a certificate of occupancy is granted for a residence. This means all required inspections have been completed and passed, and people can start living in the residence. We also call this a finaling the building permit. So HCD tracks progress towards RENA based on reporting on building permits issued. So when we give somebody a go-ahead to start construction on a new house, that's when the unit gets counted, which was surprising to me because I assumed it would be when it was actually constructed. But it's when it's issued that it gets counted. So one thing to keep in mind when reviewing the annual progress report is that we are just reporting on housing units as defined by HCD. And pursuant to their guidelines, only separate living quarters qualify as housing units where the occupants live and eat separately from any other person in the building and have direct access from the outside of the building or through a common hall. In contrast, we don't count as a housing unit shared living quarters like dorms, bunkhouses, transient motel hotels where people live, quarters in institutional and general hospitals, so like Sorrel Leaf Healing Center doesn't count, student housing of any kind, surprisingly, doesn't count. Unfortunately, for Arcata and senior housing with group living arrangements where they don't have separate living quarters, doesn't count. So another thing to keep in mind is that, except when we include prior years in the reporting, the information shown in the report is only for the building permits that were approved, issued, or received a certificate of occupancy between January first and December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So for example, I'm sure you all saw Laurel Canyon Senior Housing on Seventh and Myrtle being constructed in twenty twenty-three, but I actually didn't get to report on it. That's this, in this year's APR. It's design review. They applied, they originally applied in twenty twenty. Their building permit was approved and issued in twenty twenty-two. And then they didn't get their certificate of occupancy till the beginning of twenty twenty-four. So we, they would get reported in the twenty twenty APR, not in the twenty twenty-one one, in the twenty twenty-two one, not in the twenty twenty-three one, and then again in the twenty twenty-four one. So they're getting reported in three different APRs, but not in this current year. In contrast, there's other units like this garage conversion to an accessory dwelling unit on East Street. It just needed a building permit. It applied, got one, and built the thing, all in twenty twenty-three, so it's only getting reported this year. But it gets reported in multiple places. So here's a map of all of the units that we got applications for in twenty twenty-three that were complete. It's thirty separate projects totaling forty-seven units. This year, there was a new category where you had to say whether they needed a discretionary approval or not, or whether it was just a building permit. And out of these thirty projects, forty required discretionary approvals. The most onerous one, as you recall, is the Third and G, four-story mixed-use ACGC development. It needed design review, historic preservation review, coastal development permit, and a variance. There was two ADUs on Bay Street that needed coastal development permits because they're in the coastal zone. And there was a fourplex on I and Eleventh that needed design review. This is a map of building permits issued. As you can see on all these maps, we are getting a lot of accessory dwelling units, which makes sense because we're built out mostly, so there's not that many empty lots left. We got twenty-one accessory dwelling units. And this is the map that counts towards our RENA because it's building permits issued. And then building permits final. These are ones that actually finished construction and people moved in in twenty twenty-three. Twenty-one separate projects, but seventy units, forty-nine of which were the Providence Supportive Housing on Fourth Street, forty-eight very low-income units and one manager's unit. That was a Home Key motel conversion. So this is the reporting, HCD's RENA count. This spreadsheet automatically populates in the Excel file that we use based on how we've reported in past years and what I've reported for this year. And it shows that we are not doing well. We, it shows we've only approved a hundred and fifty-two units totaled to date out of our nine hundred and fifty-two, which is sixteen percent. And it shows that only seven of those were very low income. But I think that this is incorrect, and I'm going to have to go back into HCD and re-report on some earlier years because we, the Home Key projects count where we converted motel units or hotel units to permanent housing, and we didn't count them. So the one that, I don't know if I can pronounce, is the one on Third and Fourth. That's Yurok and Arcata House Partnership. They have twenty units there. That was a motel conversion project. That was issued a building permit in twenty twenty-one, or eighteen of them were. They added to this in twenty twenty-three. Or sorry, they got issued a building permit for two more in twenty twenty-three. And then Myrtle, that Laurel Canyon, I believe that's very low, not low. And then we failed to report on Providence, those forty-eight units in twenty twenty-two when that building permit was issued. So I actually think we're at twenty-three percent of our RENA. And significant, almost halfway there with our very low-income RENA. So last thing I wanted to talk about were ADUs because I thought it was awesome that we finally reached our goal of twenty a year. And you know how sometimes you're being reported, those maps overlap because some of them, like I mentioned, are getting their building permit, you know, submitted, approved, and finalized all in the same year. But there's thirty-seven distinct ADUs that were reported on as their building permit activity in twenty twenty-three. as um their building permit activity in twenty twenty-three. Um and I looked at those. They range anywhere from as small as like less than three hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet in size, which is the maximum they can be. And the average and median are around six hundred square feet in size. Um and twenty-two of them were conversion of existing buildings or building space or legalization of um unpermitted ADUs uh and then fifteen were new construction. Um then I pulled out just the ones where there was a conversion. Most of them were garage conversions. There were some shed shop conversions and portions of primary residences that returned into ADUs. And um I think the big price differences have to do with whether um they got a contractor or not. That's at least what my, the building official thinks. But the average cost and median cost is around uh forty-five thousand dollars. Then I looked at new construction and I had to pull out the ones where they were doing other stuff too, because then the value was for the whole project. Um and new construction ADUs are significantly more expensive. Uh two of these, the two yellow ones were prefab units on new foundations and I was surprised. Uh but the building official wasn't that. These were just as expensive as uh stick-built new construction. And I just wanted to highlight that an advertised ADUs, uh they only require a building permit with a few exceptions. They're allowed on any parcel in any district in conjunction with a si- uh an existing or um you know, an application for a single or multifamily dwelling. You, there, there's no sewer or water impact fees for accessory dwelling units are waived. Um you don't need a parking space for your ADU. And if you're converting an existing garage or other type of covered parking space into an ADU, there's no replacement parking required. Um that used to be the case and that I know some people still think it is. That's not true. Don't worry about parking. If you want an ADU, you can have an ADU. And they don't count towards maximum density far or site coverage standards. They're a bonus unit that you get, um which is really cool. And you can, a lot of people have like an existing shed or garage that's really old, that's right on a property line. You can convert it to an ADU or replace it with an ADU and you can have zero setback. You can, you're not required to fix that non-conforming setback. That's it.
Thank you very much. Was very thorough and answered a lot of questions and I think a lot of us have had. So we appreciate that. Further questions for staff?
Um yeah, uh yeah, thanks again for for that that report. And it was also interesting to see the prefab versus new construction were were fairly similar. You you'd think prefab would be cheaper. Uh my question is around um the the presentation we had from uh Lori Richmond at Cal Poly and and her students who who presented um information and suggested a potential language for an ordinance for tiny houses. Where 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 are we at with that? Is that, how does that fit into the ADU, JDU picture at this point?
Right, we actually used that um to create a tiny house on wheels uh section of our inland zoning code that was adopted in twenty twenty-two. And then, yeah, maybe it was just last year and then we updated it this last zoning code update. Um so you're allowed a tiny house on wheels as an accessory dwelling unit. So that's the only type of unit allowed in the city that's not on a permanent foundation. Um and then any unit in the city can be as small as one-twenty, one-fifty square feet. We have an efficiency dwelling unit um language in our uh building code, which is uh one-fifty. Eureka municipal, yeah, one-fifty. So you can be as small as a hundred fifty square feet even for your primary residence.
Has anybody done a tiny house in in Eureka?
Oh yeah. I mean, a lot of these ADUs are tiny. They're like two hundred, three hundred square feet in size. Yeah. But nobody's done tiny out, nobody's gotten a tiny house on wheels permitted yet. That's my dream.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report and the um presentation. One question I had was, it seemed like when I started my planning career, ADUs weren't credited towards housing numbers. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, uh I think they used to not be because HCD now makes a big point of the fact that they are now credited. And junior ADUs are credited, even though some of them aren't uh full units, you know?
Right. Okay, because yeah, so so in terms of the numbers you showed, you know, our responsibility for uh let's see, one uh nine hundred and fifty-two units, right? And so of those nine fifty-two, an ADU counts as one unit and a JDU counts as one unit towards the nine fifty-two, right?
Correct. And a lot of our low low-income units that we have reported are not deed restricted. They're just uh five hundred, they're less than five hundred square feet in size ADUs. Which we've determined in Humboldt County uh rent for uh rental prices that count as low income.
Right, that's kind of the affordable by design idea, right?
Yeah.
Um and then you had a slide earlier that showed the differences in in the um, I think it was the median income. And you had the eighty-three thousand eight hundred, that is the state data, and the fifty-one thousand nine seventy-one. And I guess I was trying to, maybe you ran through it really quick, but where where was each coming from as far as those discrepancies?
The fifty thousand dollar one was um the Census, the American Community Survey, the most recent five-year. And then the state, what they do is um, I guess they take anybody that's, they have a a rural average median income and any uh region that's below that, they bump you up to it. So we got bumped up to that statewide rural average uh eighty-three thousand eight hundred for purposes of determining affordability for housing.
So so conceivably in another part of the state, you might be under, you might be over what the median would be. But you know, given a lower median than you, than is actually realistic for the demographics in your community. But in our case, it's we're we're below what the average comes to.
Yeah, which ultimately means that a lot more things qualify as affordable than maybe should.
Right, right. Um because that did seem higher than I expected. Is that, how recent is that eighty-three thousand number?
That's the most recent number. They update it yearly.
Yeah, I think I was looking at last year's maybe and it was a little, I think it was like seventy.
Yeah, it's significantly more than last year's.
Yeah. Okay, and then um with the, I guess while we're talking about housing, like have we had any projects that have invoked the um Housing Accountability Act? Where you dedicate twenty percent of your units to moderate and then have certain higher bar or lower bar for approval or, you know?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, we've only, we've dealt with density bonuses so far. The ones that we've dealt with were not for additional units. It was for um waiving standards. And then we've had a few SB nine units. But no, um nobody's come to us with um that. Yeah, it's surprising, but we actually get more pushback on our minimum density standards these days than on our our maximum density standards.
Yeah. And I guess from your experience with the ADU wave that's kind of crashing on everybody's shores, like what are the things that trip people up more often than not? Obviously, parkings off the table and other things that were historically or setbacks are usually relieved. Um are there other things that you're finding are, you know, gumming up the works or stymieing potential ADUs from emerging?
Right, the, yeah, the Caitlin said privacy issues. We've heard complaints about that. But I don't think that's preventing people from applying for them. Um I think, you know, I know our building inspector and building official do a lot of work helping people through construction. Like a lot of um owner builders are doing it. And luckily, we have super helpful building inspector and building official who care and go out there and help people get through it. Um so I think if you don't have that, you probably would be struggling more. And then financing is hard because um it's hard to get that loan. Um and people are worried that then the bank will refinance their primary residence at this new in um, you know, they're locked in on a lower uh because now that um what I'm what the mortgage rates are so much higher now.
Right, right.
But we're working, uh finance um is and um economic development are working on uh um using TOT to build this housing trust fund that we're then gonna be, become a financer of ADUs. So people can apply to us and we'll have a list of pre-approved um contractors and and ADU designers for them. And then um we'll work them through the design permitting and construction process. And then we were trying to partner with a bank to get them refinanced with the bank. So then we can collect the money back and and give it to somebody else.
And I guess my last question is just about, it seems to me like there's a lot of historical structures in the city that were built for either large families or just wealthy people that have historically been informally, shall we say, turned into multifamily units that uh are we seeing those emerge in terms of trying to get official recognition and sewer connections and water connections, that kind of thing?
No, I only saw this year one adding a unit. And I believe there's more units out there than we're counting because a lot of people don't actually finalize their units too, where they come in and get that final inspection. Um yeah, I think there's a lot more out there. And so maybe a program where we advertise amnesty or something, uh we could get more people to come in.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial because I do think there are a lot of them out there that just are kind of under the radar. Okay, thank you.
I'm curious. I'm used to looking at census data and seeing uh a median income for the city of Eureka more in the mid forties than in the fifties. Uh why, why did the decision to use the countywide uh numbers here?
Oh, instead of Eureka, did I use Humboldt County?
I believe so.
Then that was a mistake. Yeah, I know. I meant to use, I go to Census uh Quick Facts and that's where I found it.
Yeah, I think there you would find the Humboldt number uh rather than the Eureka number. And I'm not sure how often what I'm referring to gets updated. So there may be reasons not to use the Eureka number or to use it at sometimes not others. But you know, having just paid attention to this for the vacation rental stuff, the number that I came up with was more like forty-four, I think.
So yeah, Census Quick Facts is saying for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two Eureka, the median household income is fifty-one nine seventy-one. So I wonder if, since we previously looked, it's even jumped. Because this is not like the twenty twenty census, it's the American Community Survey.
Okay, that's helpful.
Which they, it's not a like a census, it's they project it based on uh
Right, they kind of interpolate in between the census because the census is every decade, right?
Yeah.
I think they kind of, yeah, they do that.
That makes sense. Uh good to, even though the numbers aren't huge, huge, it's, it is good to see some traction happening with the ADUs. Uh looks like that's moving in the right direction. Uh I just want to say that I think they should have workshopped the term Rena. In five minutes, you would have come with Rana, which is so much more powerful and it rhymes, so just my two cents there.
Okay.
So this was our sixth cycle. So the numbers we're looking at, we would ideally want to be six eighths of our targets. If we were, you know, incrementally moving towards the goals of the Rena. Is that correct?
Uh yeah, we should be further along than we are.
Three quarters is a little easier than six eighths, but uh yeah, the, I mean, it can all come in the last seven or eight cycles theoretically and be just as good. But is that, is that fair?
I think twenty twenty-four will be halfway.
And we're around twenty-three percent or twenty?
Yeah, we're a quarter there. So we should be further. It's really the big affordable housing projects that get us our numbers though. Like we're really with, you take those away, we're only averaging or we were previously only averaging like a dozen a year.
Okay, thank you for
Okay. We will move on to General Plan Conformance Review for County Acquisition eight oh three Fourth Street. Yes, and um it's really exciting. We have our newest planner presenting. Welcome.
Hello. Uh I'll wait just for a moment while we get this up on the slides. Uh good evening, commissioners. Uh my name is Miguel Guerrero. I'm the newest uh planning uh planner assistant here in the planning team. Um and tonight, I'm here to present the General Plan Conformance Review for the proposed acquisition of property located at eight oh three Fourth Street. The property proposed for acquisition is located at eight oh four Fourth Street. Zooming in a little closer, you can see the property is located at the northeast corner of Fourth and I Streets. Little background here, uh this parcel also known as a courthouse union. The land use stagnation for this parcel is downtown commercial and is zoned downtown. The partial measure measures thirteen thousand two hundred square feet with a one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square foot single-story building as well as a fixed overhead shelter measuring nine hundred and sixty-six square feet. And is currently being used as an auto repair shop. This property has a history of petroleum contamination resulting from leaking underground storage tanks associated with the past use of a gas station. Uh the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services Division of Environmental Health, DEH, opened a cleanup case in twenty twelve and a site investigation and corrective action occurred, uh resulting in case closure in twenty fifteen. Uh in twenty twenty-one, the underground storage tanks were exposed, cleaned and removed under the oversight of DEH and soil samples were collected from each end of the evacuation or excavation site, I'm sorry, and analyzed. At that time, no petroleum contamination uh was detected. Uh so further action related to the former underground storage tanks and cleanup case are not required. Uh this was resolved in twenty twenty-one. All right, uh history of the courthouse union. This um building was built uh in nineteen fifty-six and was initially a gas station. This property is not considered a historic property. It's not listed on Eureka's local register of historic places. And is not included in Eureka in an architectural view green book as part of the historic inventory. It's not eligible for the California Historic Reg- Register of Historic Resources. Nor would it be considered a historic resource under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. The proposal, uh the county proposes to acquire the point-three acre property at eight oh three Fourth Street, demolish the existing structures and redevelop the site into a municipal office facility. At this time, the height, configuration and occupancy are to be determined. However, the county has committed to consulting with the city of Eureka once the preliminary uh development concept is prepared. They do not envision this parcel being used as for off-street parking. The co- Conformance Review here, uh since the project proposed is located within city limits, uh California Government Code six five four zero two requires the district prior to either acquisition or disposal of real real property to request a determination from the city of Eureka's Planning Commission as to the conformity of the location, purpose and extent of the acquisition uh with the city's adopted general plan. So here, looking at the conformity, the location, purpose, uh and extent of acquisition, uh what I just said. So here, looking at the conformity, the location, purpose and extent of acquisition, what I just said. All right, recommendation. So staff has made a slight adjustment to the proposed resolution in the staff report. Staff's recommendation is to receive the report. And the new motion is adopt a resolution finding the county's acquisition of eight oh three Fourth Street for the purpose of developing a municipal office facility conforms with the city two thousand and forty general plan. The suggested motion. And here it is. There we go. And I will stop sharing the screen here to allow for discussion.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I have just one that, if you could remind us of what the downtown commercial downtown zoning and land use things allow for?
Yes, you've got it. Downtown commercial allows for restaurants, let's see, restaurants, lodging, entertainment, cultural visitor centers, offices and upper floor residential uses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think an important note in the staff report is just that cities and counties enjoy jurisdictional immunity from requirements with conformance to zoning. So it's almost irrelevant what the zoning is because they don't have to come forward and get permission. It works both ways, you know? So is that, is that very, yeah, so it's kind of a weird anomaly, but that's the way things work. I guess I'd just point out that if anyone's grousing about the loss of the gas station in terms of redevelopment, I did look through my postcards and I see that the site was previously home to a two-story, looks like residential building. I can show a picture real quick. You can see the, the, this building is still there on I Street where the central, is it central office, the copy place is, but you can see the, the actual turret or corner. So, so there's periods of significance when it comes to historical resources. And the one we're looking at is not the first or the only one. So, you know, the loss of redevelopment in my mind is not that troubling. That's all I had.
Thanks for sharing that. Further questions? No. All right, we'll open it for public comment. I'm not seeing any hands raising on Zoom and.
Um, there might be somebody from the county. Just, is somebody from the county on Zoom and wants to speak? Or anybody else for that matter?
Doesn't look like it. All right, and no one in chambers, so we will close the like comment and bring it back for a resolution, a motion and vote.
I'll make the motion if Miguel Guerrero will pull back up the motion for us.
You got it. Thank you. I can change it. Nope. Nope. There we go.
All right, I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding Humboldt County's acquisition of eight oh three Fourth Street for the purpose of developing a municipal office facility conforms with the city's two thousand and forty general plan.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? A call for a vote? Sure.
Of course, I didn't finish typing this yet though, so that's, you know, all the fun. Okay. I'm forgetting some, oh, sorry, I hadn't got the secondary and it wouldn't let me move forward. Okay, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
And Chairman Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, we look forward to seeing you again.
I do too.
It looks like we can move forward to staff reports and communication. Anything added here?
I just wanted to mention, we have a lot on city council next Tuesday, including Commissioner Kraft's gonna be reporting on your vacation rental report. And also, we are reporting on, we're sharing out about what we heard from the Jacobs Campus Town Hall and potential next steps for city council. I also wanted to mention that the CIP is going, the capital improvement program is going to council in April. And it's not coming to Planning Commission this year because there's no new projects this year. And finally, I wanted to let everybody know that next week, we're doing a walkabout with Eureka Main Street in Old Town to talk about the LCP update, the local coastal program update in the morning on the twentieth. So that'll be fun. That's it for me.
Thank you. Other reports and communications? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.